Again, I would like to call the city council meeting for April 25th, 2018, to order. At this time, we're going to have a moment of silence, but you know, in the recent big table experience, we're close to 5,000 people from throughout the Quad Cities came together and talked about our community. And as we recognize, a little while, we'll be recognizing Lago Mercino's as another one of our local businesses, which are the foundation of our community. It really comes down to the individuals in our community that really makes this a strong and a vibrant community. And as much as we think about the larger institutions and we think about large entities, but every one of us individually bring our own unique talents, our own unique philosophies, our own unique diversity to the table. And with that in mind, as we embrace in this beautiful, sunshiny day, let's focus on our sameness and how we all come together to make a difference in this world. With that, a moment of silence, please. Thank you very much. Alderman Dunn, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
(inaudible)
Jackie, would you please call the roll?
Ambrose.
Here.
Condon.
Here.
Rossen.
Here.
Dickman.
Here.
Matson.
Here.
Grip.
Here.
McGinnis.
Here.
Clul. Tompkins.
Here.
Dunn.
Here.
Nine present, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. And I get this point, I want to again welcome you all in a good evening. And as we begin the meeting of the city council, I want to welcome all of those in attendance and also those who are viewing the meeting on television or on the Internet. We respectfully welcome your comments and opinions, and please keep in mind that as you talk to the council, you're also sharing your thoughts with fellow Davenporters and with viewers throughout the region by way of our TV broadcast. We are happy that you're participating in your city government and ask that your participation reflect the common desire we all share to make Davenport an even greater place for all of our citizens. For the children, adults, seniors, and families in our community, those in attendance, and those watching at home, I thank you for joining us. At this time, we ask that you turn off or silence your cellphones and other electronic devices as they can be disruptive and interfere with the audio system here in the chambers. If you wish to address the council on a specific item that appears on the discussion agenda, you are encouraged to do so during that discussion agenda items. You will also have an opportunity to address the city council under public with business portion of the meeting, which will occur towards the end. When addressing the council, I ask that you step to the podium, wait to be recognized by myself, speak to the council as a body and not to any single member. We will ask that you limit your remarks to no more than five minutes. And also, we'd like you, as you come to the dais, to give your address and your location as you identify yourself. I ask that everyone, and I know you all will, observe the commonly accepted rules of courtesy, decorum, dignity, and good taste. So, thank you again for being here. Will and Alderman move the approval of the minutes for the city council meeting for April 11th, 2018? It's been moved and seconded. All in favor say aye. Any opposed, same sign. Thank you very much. That is passed. Is there a city administrator update this evening?
Nothing this evening, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. And now, would an Alderman move the report of the committee, the whole, for April 18th, 2018? That also has been moved and seconded. All in favor say aye. Any opposed, same sign. Thank you. That is approved as well. We have several appointments and proclamations this evening, and three appointments, and I want to read those, actually, present those now. First of all, we have the sound alarm, and Alderman Tompkins is going to read that proclamation.
Thank you. I have a proclamation, whereas every day across the country, seven people die, seven people die in a home fire, and another 36 people suffer injuries. The American Red Cross wants to end these tragedies and save lives. This spring, the American Red Cross and 35,000 volunteers across the country will sound the alarm by installing 100,000 free smoke alarms in high-risk communities in more than 100 major cities. And whereas part of the ongoing Red Cross Home Fire Campaign, already credited with saving more than 381 lives across the country, a critical part of the campaign is Sound the Alarm, a series of home fire safety and smoke alarm installation events all over the United States between April 28th, 2018, and May 13th, 2018. In just three years, our home visits have accomplished so much, including the installation of more than 1 million smoke alarms and preparing more than 1 million people against home fires. And whereas here in Davenport and our surrounding region, the American Red Cross serving the Quad Cities in west-central Illinois, and 200 volunteers will help save lives at the Sound the Alarm Home Safety and Smoke Alarm Installation Event on Saturday, April 28th, 2018, from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., fulfilling appointments to install free smoke alarms, replace batteries in existing alarms, and help families create escape plans. Now therefore, we, Mayor Frank Klipsch, and the Davenport City Council do hereby proclaim April 28th, 2018, as Sound the Alarm Day in the city of Davenport, and encourage the American Red Cross to educate and protect residents of our community against home fires. We encourage everyone to support the American Red Cross in joining this life-saving effort dated this 25th day of April, 2018, and I move the proclamation.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor say aye. Any opposed, same sign. I think Jason O'Rourke is going to come up and accept the proclamation. And we have two other proclamations, and then we're going to do some appointments as well. First of all, next one is Motorcycle Awareness Month, and Alderman Dunn is going to read that proclamation.
Thank you, Your Honor. The proclamation reads, whereas the people of Davenport... Proclamation reads, whereas the people of Davenport have an enduring regard for preservation of life on our highways, avenues, and streets, and whereas Motorcycle Awareness Day is being observed throughout our community, the state of Iowa, and the nation, and whereas all motorcycle organizations, clubs, dealerships, groups, and highway safety officials in our region should join with the Iowa Governor's Traffic Safety Bureau and Abate of Iowa in actively promoting safe operation, increased rider training, improved licensing efforts, and motorist awareness, and whereas during the month, and all months, all highway users should unite in safe sharing of roadways throughout the state of Iowa, and whereas Motorcycle Awareness Month provides citizens of Iowa an opportunity to commit themselves to being more alert and aware of other motor vehicle drivers, and especially those operating motorcycles. Now therefore, we, Mayor Frank Klipsch and the Davenport City Council do hereby proclaim the month of May, 2018, as Motorcycle Awareness Month. In the city of Davenport, Iowa, and urge all citizens of our community and across the nation to operate their vehicles in a safe manner, with particular regard to motorcycle operators, dated this 25th day of April, 2018, and I move the proclamation.
It has been moved and seconded. All in favor say aye. Any opposed, same sign. Thank you. That is approved, and I want to have Al Schaefer and Brad Neff from Abate of Iowa to come up and accept the proclamation. to read that proclamation.
Thank you, Your Honor. Proclamation, whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees, and whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife, and whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community, and whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal, and whereas the city of Davenport has observed each Arbor Day for 39 consecutive years by planting trees. Now therefore, we, Mayor Frank Klipsch, and the Davenport City Council do hereby proclaim April 28th, 2018, as Arbor Day, and encourage our citizens to support the maintenance of a healthy urban forest dated this 25th day of April, 2018, and I move the proclamation.
It has been moved and seconded. All in favor say aye. Any opposed, same sign. Thank you. And I think Jason Vance, our city arborist, and Annette Horvath from Mid-American Energy, who've been a very great collaborative partner, are going to come up and accept the proclamation.
Another note to add, Annette is from Mid-American Energy, and this is her fourth Trees Please Grant that they provided for $20,000. We'll get up there and get a picture of that.
A big check. Always get a big check in the mail.
I think my mayor, Paul Timm, wants to do a weekly $20,000 presentation, so...
No, okay.
So, let's do this one, too. Let's hold up, let's get a picture of that. You can do the check and the proclamation. We don't want to cover your face, though. There we go.
That's okay.
There we go. So, we get Mid-American.
I want to make sure we get the Mid-American.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Want to say anything? Do you want to say anything?
We'll be planting trees on the riverfront Saturday morning, if anyone would like to join us. We're going to plant about 30 trees between the Centennial Bridge and Marquette Street.
Great.
We'll start at about 8:00 o'clock.
Thank you for all your work, and thank you for your support.
Thank you, Mayor. Would you like your check?
Sure. Let me get it in my pocket. We'll leave that up here. Thank you very much. Thanks, Annette.
Next, we're going to make a few appointments. First of all, we have two appointments for the Riverfront Improvement Commission. That's two new appointments. Gwendolyn Lee and Rando Goblerch are either of them here this evening. They didn't necessarily have to be here, but we want to thank them for joining and doing this work as part of our Riverfront Improvement Commission. And also, the Planning and Zoning Commission, there's a reappointment for David Tollman. Is there a motion to accept these appointments? It's been moved and seconded. All in favor say aye. Any opposed, same sign. Great. Thank you. And thank them already in advance for their service, and in David Tollman's case, for his past service that he's given us already. Last, the next part of this, before we get into the rest of the meeting, is some presentation. As you know, we started basically in 2016, doing a local business, the foundation of our community recognition. You know, we hear about the large communities, the community companies that are in our community, but really, the majority of people in our community work for those smaller communities, and that fabric that they provide is extremely important. So, to that end, I just want to, we're going to be recognizing, and you'll know as I talk into this, but Angelo Lago Mercino and his wife, Luigi, is that right? Pretty good. I thought I was working on that. We're immigrants from a small village in northern Italy. They opened up a little store in downtown Moline in 1908. By the early 1920s, Moline was bustling with factories along the Mississippi River, a nearby train station, several theaters, and five soda fountains. Lago Mercino's became famous for their homemade chocolates, ice cream sundaes, and fruit baskets. Over the years, Lago Mercino family has seen many changes in downtowns, as they have continued to be in the same location there in Moline since 1921. In 97, the family decided to expand throughout the Quad Cities and in the Iowa Quad Cities, and they founded the perfect fit in the Village of East Davenport, a historic stopping district within the city of Davenport. And Governor Pranstead was present at the grand opening, showing support for small family businesses. Lago Mercino's has shipped their famous chocolates all over the world, and in 2006, Lago Mercino's received the James Beard Foundation American Classic Award. This national award is given to restaurants across the country that have served quality food that reflects the character of their local communities. Lago Mercino's currently has 11 full-time employees and 28 part-time employees, including high school students and students attending college in the area. In addition, for the last 28 years, they have employed persons with special needs from Arc of the Rock Island County and the Handicap Development Center. The Lago Mercino family has been a longtime members of both downtown Moline and the Village of Davenport Business Associations. They have worked with fellow businesses to improve the business climate throughout many activities, including family-oriented events for the greater Quad Cities. For the last eight years, Lago Mercino has sponsored the Cocobino Hot Chocolate Race, raising over $60,000 for the Boys and Girls Club of the Mississippi Valley. We are proud, and they are proud, to be part of our community. You know, if you've heard somebody say, "Will you marry me?", or "Happy birthday!", or "Happy anniversary!", or "Congratulations!", or "Just have a good day", they probably stopped by Lago Mercino's before that happened. And for 98 years overall, they've been a significant part of the memories, happy events, and world-renied culinary product that they were able to present. So, with that, we'd like to recognize the Lago Mercino family, and I think we're going to have a number of the members come on up, maybe Tom and Sandy Lago Mercino, Beth Lago Mercino and Terri Otten, and Lisa Lago Mercino, Ambrose, if you'd all come up.
Well, we want to personally thank you and the city of Davenport. It took us 97 years to get over to the Iowa side, but we're glad we did, and we really feel that we're an important part of the Village of East Davenport, and we're proud to be part of the city of Davenport also.
Well, thank you very much. And this reads, local business, the foundation of our community, recognizing the unique businesses of Davenport, Iowa, Lago Mercino's, April 2018. So, congratulations and thank you, and we're ready for the next 80 years. So, thank you very much.
I don't know what I'll look like then.
That's right. Just keep eating that chocolate, it looks like.
Let's get a picture of Andrew up here. Close you up here a little bit.
Here, Sandy.
Come on, Sandy. We'll get somebody to take the picture. You want a picture with Sandy?
She married me for chocolates.
Why don't you guys help hold on to this a little bit? There we go. Hold on, we're getting there. There was a piece of chocolate on the thumb when the camera didn't work. This brick's getting heavy, by the way, I just want you to know. Build any excitement in it. Right. We're good.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Are there any petitions or communications from any of our council members or the mayor? And I think Alderman Dickman is our community engagement leader will maybe lead that discussion. Alderman Dickman.
Thank you, Your Honor. You mentioned the big table that happened this past Friday and Saturday, and I just wanted to make sure everyone remembered to fill out your surveys and get those back, because that is the other half of the process. It would really help to figure out whatever everyone was saying and try to collaborate that all into a great direction for our community and our region. And that's it for me tonight.
Thank you, Alderman Dickman. Alderman McGinnis.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just wanted to, special thanks to Neighborhood Services. We're working on a difficult and longstanding problem in the Third Ward, and they've been extremely helpful, and things are moving along, and I just want to say thank you very much, and thank you on behalf of the residents along that area.
Thank you very much. Alderman McGinnis. Alderman Matson.
Thank you. We're working on the next Seventh Ward meeting in May. We think it'll be the 19th, but I don't want to say that for sure. Right now, we're putting together some speakers, so we think that's when it's going to be. I'll let you know next week. Thanks.
Thank you, Alderman Matson. Seeing no others, we're looking at some individual approval items on the discussion agenda. And just to clarify those for those here in attendance, last week at the Committee, the whole, if you have a copy of the agenda, we went through every single item in detail. And if there are any items that we thought we needed more information or potentially had interest in more discussion, we put those on the discussion agenda portion of this tonight. So, there are two of those. First is a first consideration ordinance for case number ROD 18-03. We crest of the city of Davenport to amend Title 17 of the Davenport Municipal Code entitled zoning by amending section 17.36.003.B.6 by adding sale and storage of fireworks and explosive devices, subject to such sales being located more than 1,000 feet from any residential district to the list of permitted uses in the M1 Light Industrial District. Before we go on, I'm going to ask our chief, Morris, our fire marshal, to come up and give us a little clarification, some things that our Alderman asked for last week, and I think we have some copies of that, but you're going to fill us in. Chief Morris.
I am. Good evening. Jim Morris, Fire Marshal. Since last week's meeting, staff reviewed the ordinance and amended copies in front of you. There was also a request for a map outlining the sales area that's also proposed in this ordinance. The amended ordinance deletes out the term explosive and exempts all novelty fireworks and sparklers.
Can you just clarify what those are, maybe, again, if you would? Whatnot, like, types of things that would fall into that category?
Like the snakes, the poppers, the whippersnappers, those are all considered novelty. Those are all the things that we could always get prior to the change in the law back July 1, when fireworks were legalized.
Thank you. With that in mind, is there a motion to amend this?
Your Honor, why don't we hear from the public first?
Before, oh, thank you, yes, definitely. Before we do the amendment?
Sure, and then after it's moved and considered, we can amend it.
Okay. Thank you. Is anyone from the public who would like to talk about this or speak on this item? It's been moved and seconded, and we do this, and then we move to that first? Okay.
At this point, if someone would like to move to amend the ordinance or substitute the version that's in front of you, which creates the exemption that Chief Morris mentioned.
It's been moved and indefinitely seconded. Roll call, please.
Ambrose? I'm sorry. Ambrose?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
Rossen?
Yes.
Dickman?
Yes.
Matson?
Yes.
Grip?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Tompkins?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Ambrose?
Yes.
Eight yeses, Your Honor, one no.
Thank you very much. So, that will move forward to the second consideration next week. And Will, next one is a resolution approving a 90-day extension of the moratorium on changes in business licenses in the Rockingham Road corridor between Division and South Concord Street, where the new license represents a substantial change from the previous use. City of Davenport petitioner, it falls into wards one and three. Is there any public who want to make comments?
Good evening, Mayor and council. My name is Michael Malloy. I represent certain business owners and citizens in the Rockingham Road corridor, including John Martin and Derek Carter, who are opposed to this particular 90-day moratorium extension. We believe that this moratorium extension does not have a rational basis at this time for extending the actual moratorium. I went online and just printed off a copy of the resolution that you have in your packet, and I'd ask that this copy be passed out to everyone, because you may have not seen the actual hard copy. But there is no attachment to this resolution.
Al Fugel clerk, yes.
There is no attachments to this one-page resolution, and it doesn't specify exactly what area we're talking about here. As you know, the city council previously enacted a moratorium on the Rockingham Road corridor, and there is no necessity at this time for another extension of that particular moratorium. If you read the resolution, you'll see that it refers to area between Division Street and South Concord Streets in Davenport. This particular 10-blocked area is somehow being singled out for this particular moratorium, whereas the other parts of Rockingham Road, or other parts of the city for that matter, are not being singled out for any kind of moratorium. And when the government puts a freeze on a business licenses for the future, it puts the government at risk for damages to those businesses that it harms in that regard. There's no compelling reason for the government, for the Davenport City Council, to adopt this moratorium extension at this time. The moratorium extension discriminates against new business licenses, where Davenport should want more licenses, more license holders on the Rockingham Road corridor. Licenses are good, and they generate revenue for the city. Your staff, as I pointed out, did not provide any supporting documentation on this resolution, including a map of the area it applies to, or any kind of rationale for extension of the previous 90-day moratorium resolution. This appears to be a politically-driven moratorium, not a legal one, and it particularly hurts small businesses seeking to start up in the area, especially African-American, Hispanic-American businesses. This violates the business owners and startup businesses' Rockingham Road due-process rights by summarily enacting this moratorium. The West End does not need another moratorium at this time. Davenport does not have the legal grounds necessary to enact this legal moratorium. I would suggest you don't want to put the city in legal jeopardy by approving this particular moratorium. And there are other people I want to address you tonight on this. I would ask anybody in the audience who is opposed to this to either stand or raise their hand. Thank you. As you can see, there is a substantial opposition to this particular resolution, and the city council should vote this particular resolution down tonight. Thank you very much. Any questions?
Thank you. Anyone else from the public who would like to, again, your name and address, please?
My name is Derek Carter. I own multiple properties on Rockingham Corridor, 4620 Rockingham, 2637 Rockingham, 2333 Rockingham. Look at the show out of the people here tonight in support of business, preferably or particularly local business on the Rockingham Corridor. This moratorium has affected us, many of us, the families of the people that we provide food for, for us business owners in so many forms and fashions. These properties that we own, we're really not allowed to do anything with. And we've purchased these properties with the idea to bring business to the West End of Davenport to give it a commercial identity in some form and fashion. It was presented by the Planning and Zoning Department, that they wanted things like, you know, coffee shops and eateries and things like that on the West End of Davenport, which is fantastic. But what draws these people here? People don't just decide, hey, I'm going to go to that random eatery and try... Hispanic-American businesses. This violates the business owners and startup businesses' Rockingham Road due process rights by summarily enacting this moratorium. The West End does not need another moratorium at this time. Davenport does not have the legal grounds necessary to enact this legal moratorium. I would suggest you don't want to put the city in legal jeopardy by approving this particular moratorium. And there are other people I want to address you tonight on this. I would ask anybody in the audience who is opposed to this to either stand or raise their hand. As you can see, there is, there is a substantial opposition to this particular resolution, and the city council should vote this particular resolution down tonight. Thank you very much. Any questions?
Thank you. Anyone else from the public who would like to, again, your name and address, please?
My name is Derek Carter. I own multiple properties on Rockingham Corridor, forty-six twenty Rockingham, twenty-six thirty-seven Rockingham, twenty-three thirty-three Rockingham. Look at the show out of the people here tonight in support of business, preferably or particularly local business on the Rockingham Corridor. This moratorium has affected us, many of us, the families of the people that we provide food for, for us business owners in so many forms and fashions. These properties that we own, we're really not allowed to do anything with. I mean, we've purchased these properties with the idea to bring business to the West End of Davenport to give it a commercial identity in some form and fashion. It was presented by the Planning and Zoning Department, that they wanted things like, you know, coffee shops and, 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 you know, eateries and things like that on the West End of Davenport, which is fantastic. But what draws these people here? People don't just decide, hey, I'm going to go to that random eatery and try it out there on the, the West End of Davenport. So, you know, those things are great, but we need to have business that is going to draw people in to the West End of Davenport. I'd like to address the fairness of this moratorium for a moment. Us property owners have been paying taxes down there. For six months, we've been paying taxes, and we haven't been allowed to do anything new with these businesses that are down there. And the city has had six months to come up with even so much as a rough draft as to what it is that they want to do with this area, and they're requesting three more months that we have to pay taxes, that we're not allowed to expand our business, or set up new business, or, you know, to be allowed to grow. And as Mike Malloy pointed out, the moratorium only affects a small portion of that Rockingham Corridor that was presented at the planning and zoning meeting. I mean, it affects that, you know, small, you know, ten-block or so area, and yet the moratorium, that's what the moratorium affects, and yet the zoning overlay is going to affect possibly a thirty-five-plus-block area? Why just us? Why are we the ones here that are singled out and not allowed to do what it is that we purchase these properties for? We came here to the West End of Davenport, and we set up in the West End of Davenport for particularly what the West End of Davenport is. So many people, so many businesses have started their businesses there in the West End of Davenport. By passing this moratorium, I'm telling you, you're going to continue to hinder us and other people from doing so. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else?
Good evening. My name is John Martin. I also own several businesses on the, on Rockingham Road. Bolt Motors, twenty-five fifty Rockingham Road. I purchased the Old Burger King building. It's twenty-four twenty-three Rockingham Road, and I also live on the West End. So, I think, for the most part, Mr. Malloy and Derek has pretty much said everything that I would say. But I do want to add this. Six months ago, roughly, this moratorium was put in place. I purchased a piece of property with the intent to use that piece of property for a car dealership, to extend my life, actually, and I'm not able to do so. So, what we have here is we have a piece of property that I paid cash for, that I honestly couldn't afford to do, but it's a good piece of property. I felt like it was a great opportunity to grow, and this property's sitting empty. This property's sitting empty. I have property taxes on this property. We're losing so much revenue with the property sitting empty, and this, this moratorium, the last six months, has pretty much stopped everything, my plans that I had planned for this property, and another ninety days will also stop everything I have planned. So, the revenue that it's cost, the, just the building sitting empty, heck, I got a mid-American, speaking of mid-American, bill not too long ago, and for a thousand dollars, and the property's sitting empty, not to mention my property taxes. I can't afford for this property to sit empty. I need to begin to start business. I need to make this thing work, and, like I said, this ninety-day moratorium, the city of Davenport will be crushing me at that point. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, hearing that, is there, it's been moved?
May I address the council?
Sure, sure.
My name's Jeff Wenderick. I was born in Davenport, live in Bettendorf. I'm a licensed real estate broker in Iowa. I'm a property owner in many parts of Davenport, including nine units in the Rocking, right on Rockingham, in the specific area that's under question. I came, come tonight to express my concerns in the extension of this moratorium. It's important, in the business world, and I sell commercial real estate as well as residential, that there's confidence in the existing zoning and in the information given by city staff and elected officials regarding properties in the city of Davenport that are being considered to be purchased, or as in this gentleman's case, he mentions, have been purchased based on those representations of the acceptable use at the time of acquisition of the properties. I believe that justification moratoriums possibly have, in certain points in time, a need, but continuing this one seems very questionable. Pending legislation should be completely vetted with public input and approved in public by a vote, and the action that you're talking about doing is saying, well, we think we're going to do this. We think we don't want anybody else to expand their business while we're thinking of doing it, and I believe that it's not proper. I believe you're hindering the use of the property by people who invested in good faith, relying on your staff, and they may not be on the council currently, but council people at that time that were contacted. And I, I think that there's, there's a lot of questions that moving this forward with a vote, first of all, it shouldn't happen. You should table it. Second of all, it shouldn't probably happen, period. But that, those are my concerns. Just a few moments ago, I heard a question. Well, what happens to the people that have come to get a license on the fireworks? Well, somebody beat you to the punch knowing you were thinking about it, and they did it. The people I think you're talking about here, they didn't beat you to the punch. They bought it before you even started punching. You're talking about restricting their use, and now you're talking about not only after they've acquired it restricting the use, which you've done, which has hindered and harmed them, now you're going to proceed to continue to do it, knowing, all of you here are listening to what's being said and what I'm saying, knowing that you're going to continue damaging. As a taxpayer, don't blow my money. Mr. Malloy, I see him all the time. I don't really want to see you guys pay Mr. Malloy any more money because he, he took you to court and got beat on something. So, please, in the interest of all the taxpayers all over town, don't put the city at risk, don't jeopardize us, and in the interest of proper due process, proper stewardship of our city, let's table it, let's move on to other important things. Thank you.
Mr. Wenderick, if you could just clarify a little bit, what are the, what are the addresses on the properties you have there?
Twenty, well, you know where, you know where the Old Burger King is? There's a four-plex across the street. Myself and a partner own that. There's a house next door. We own that.
Great.
Let's go down to Happy Joe's kitty corner across the street. There's a yellow duplex. We own that. Let's go down a little further to the gas station across the street, and that's a white duplex. We own that. Go down to the, what do they call, the Garden Edition, where Mr. Dunn's mother lives. We got a house kind of kitty corner across from that on Sunny Side.
Thank you. That was helpful, just to give a little perspective.
Okay, it's right where you're talking about.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Is there anybody else from the public who wants to talk at this time?
My name is Mike Doos, twenty-six forty-four Davie Street. I was affiliated with a fraternal organization in this, in this zoning area, and due to several things, none, or some of them not having anything to do with the city of Davenport, but some of them did. The road construction, the sidewalk that still isn't put in down there, and numerous other things, we ended up closing. We took a building that was well worth over half a million dollars, and we are lucky to sell it for a hundred and fifty. The people we sell this building to can't even open a business. So, all these other businesses down there, such as the Family Dollar, the Burger King, the Davenport Moose Lodge, these buildings are worthless, but our taxes haven't gone down any. So, if we can't sell these buildings, we can't make any money out of these buildings, city of Davenport ought to be giving us some kind of break on taxes. Doesn't make any sense for us to pay taxes on a five-hundred-thousand-dollar building that we can't sell for a hundred and fifty. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
My name's Cody Snyder, twenty-six seventeen Rockingham Road. I support, you know, everything Derek and the other owners of the properties down there are saying. I lived down there most of my life, and I just feel it's unfair, you know, all these businesses can't open anything, and you guys expect so much out of them, trying to open the businesses and spend. They can't make any money, you know, without spending it, so that's all I got to say.
Thank you, thank you. Anybody else?
I just got one thing to say. I'm a lifelong resident down the West End down there, and it's kind of a, you drive down West...
Excuse me, could you give your name?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
My name's Randy Dyer.
And your address, please?
Pardon?
Your address, please?
My?
Your address.
My address, twenty-one seventeen Clausen, I'm two blocks off of, off of Rockingham.
Thank you.
Born and raised down there, lived there my whole life. You drive down Rockingham, and, I mean, I'm used to it, but it's not a real pleasant-looking spot. I kind of get that's where you guys are going, trying to fix it up, but one of the guys you're trying to stop, Bolt Motors, if you drove down there and looked at that building, it used to be just an old block building, and the man's done a wonderful job on that place. I mean, it's pleasant to look at when you drive by. Excuse me. He's wanting to open another lot at the Burger King, and I have the utmost faith in him that he'll make that a nice-looking place, too, and I think we need that downtown, down the Rockingham Corridor. I mean, clean it up a little bit, and that's what this man's trying to do here, and you guys want to stop him. I just don't understand that, but, like I said, I just want to be a businessman, make some money, serve some people. He's fixing up his properties, makes it look nice down there. I don't understand why you don't want to let him do it, so that's all I got to say.
Thank you. Is there any, anyone else have anything else to add to the discussion? Anything addition? It's been moved and seconded? Okay, before we do that, any discussion by any of the aldermen? I see a bunch. Alderman Ambrose.
Thank you, Your Honor. You know, Mr. Clark and Mr. Martin, I think they've made a very compelling case. You know, government shouldn't be overbearing. People that want to open businesses in our West End, south of Locust Street, we should be embracing and doing everything we possibly can to help them be successful. So, I'm a little disappointed to see my friend lawyer Malloy down here, but, you know, he made, he made a very strong case today. Thanks.
Thank you. Alderman Dunn?
Thank you, Your Honor. Do we have somebody from staff that can address why we're extending this moratorium?
Bruce Berger, your community planning and economic development director. So, back in November, I'm addressing the timeline, I guess, question of it. So, back in November, the six months was instituted and started the clock ticking. Thought we would be able to hire a consultant who could be able to go through a course of study on the uses and changes in advance of the zoning change. The cost to do that and identifying the scope took some time. It's going to be more expensive than everybody was prepared to do by the time we finally honed in on that fact and got the scope together. Roughly four and a half, five months had passed, so we quickly decided that staff could actually try to jumpstart that, but after one meeting, as several folks have mentioned, it, it's going to take more time to be able to go through that analysis. So, as a result, that's, that's really the reason for trying to extend the moratorium, to be able to get the, the study done.
Thank you, Mr. Berger. Alderman Tompkins?
Thank you. Bruce, I have another question. Sorry. I was trying to get you before you got back. If the moratorium didn't exist, would the current business location meet the requirements for a used car lot?
I'm not sure that I've looked at it in detail, but my understanding is the zoning would allow for it, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Dickman?
Thank you, Your Honor. Question about the resolution, and I know that there was delay, and you talked some, a little bit about why we wanted to do this in the first place, the, the idea of visioning and creating a plan. You know, in, in the end, we all want to work together. We want to have a really great shopping district in the, the West End area, and so I was wondering if there's any way we can put in some sort of a hardship variance or a grandfathering variance for the businesses that have already made purchases to alleviate some of the hardship on our, our current business owners that wouldn't greatly increase the difficulty of, of creating the plan as we go forward.
Yes, the answer to that would be, yes, you could do that. You'd amend this resolution to allow for existing property owners to, to go ahead.
Unless any of my other colleagues have comments, I'd like to make that motion.
I would say there's a couple more comments. We'll do that first. Let's see. Alderman McGinnis?
Thank you, Your Honor. I want to thank everybody that's here tonight. I was at the meeting that was held a couple months ago, and I, you know, heard your concerns then, and, and there were concerns of others that certainly want to see improvements in the areas, as I know, in that area, as I know you do. I'd like to enter into the record. I have a petition to support extending the zoning moratorium for the Rockingham Road corridor. Says, "By my signature, I support the city extending the zoning moratorium for the Rockingham Road corridor. The moratorium is necessary to ensure public and stakeholder concerns are addressed, and a plan for revitalizing the corridor is completed." And this is, this is a petition that has about approximately ninety signatures of people who could not be here tonight, so I would like to enter this into the record.
Thank you very much. Alderman Mattson?
Thank you, Your Honor. So, so Bruce, if you could come up, please. So, we, we gave the authority for the six months to get the information and process together to do the study, correct? All right, so if we said, so could, is the study ready to go now?
No.
Okay, so that, so if we give you another ninety days, how do we know the study's going to be ready to go?
I mean, it's a good point. The, the stakeholder group, where we have a meeting date set, so it'll be, what, I guess, the second meeting we've had in kind of reviewing the process. My guess is it will likely take at least a couple of meetings, and then it would require three readings in front of council, so, so you're right.
So, so obviously, my concern is, I, I supported the moratorium because I thought we were going to get this together and, and get a plan and get a process so everybody could know what we're wanting to do. But if we're going to take more time and we're not ready to go and we keep, that's not fair for people, in my opinion. So, I'll support, certainly support Alderman Dickman's request for current people, but if we're not even ready to go now, and we're asking, and we're not sure we're going to be ready to go even after this, then that's not okay. Thank you.
Well, that's not part of the procedure. You had your opportunity to speak. Alderman Tompkins?
Thank you for allowing me to speak again, and thank you also. I wanted to thank everybody for coming down. We do appreciate your time and your feedback. My question is, so I heard the neighbors, this isn't something that is just being thrown out there that, that staff wanted to do. It's my understanding this started because we're hearing from neighbors, and they're, they made this request. Is that correct?
It's both that, and as you'll remember, when we went through goal setting, revitalizing commercial corridors is one of your priorities for the next two years with the capital investment that was made on Rockingham. This was identified as the first project out, with Mid-Brady being the second, second project.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to clarify so everybody was aware where the history is for this. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Tompkins. Alderman Rossen, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you for being here. I really enjoyed your strategic presentation. I always like it when people organize and come en masse. I like strategy, so thank you for that, and well-spoken as well, so thank you for that, too. I would prefer not to make a rash judgment tonight, because there, there's your, the group that's here right now, but there's also a bunch of people that signed the petition that are also for it. So, I would like to suggest that if staff can, by next meeting, have a very defined schedule to make sure this doesn't drag on forever. I mean, can you do that in seven days and come back with something definitive, and so we can have, so we can kind of work more on data, I mean, instead of just making a decision without, just on the fly right now? Is that, Bruce, is that something that could be done? Okay, thank you.
I would just ask for clarification. Would we need a cycle to do this?
Two weeks.
So, you're aware going, that's, next week's the committee of the whole again. It would bring forward, and then there would be an approval the following week. So, it would be two weeks, just so you're aware of that. We don't, we can't approve this next week.
Your Honor, there is an alternative method where we could put it on the committee of the whole in the regular committee, and then suspend the rules down below in the committee of the whole and approve it later in that meeting. So, there is an alternative to get it approved next week.
Thank you for that clarification, but that gives us an option, it just says we're moving forward here. I'm hearing from... forward here. I'm hearing from, and we have a few more that want to speak, but I think hearing from the colleagues, they want to do the right thing and make sure they take the right steps, but don't want to drag this on for anybody a long period of time. Alderman Grip?
Just kind of to reiterate some things that I, I said last week, there weren't nearly as many people here to discuss this last week. But the first is, we definitely want to be sensitive of, of business. We want to make sure that we can get this plan done, a good plan that will make the Rocking Door, Rockingham Corridor a, a more vibrant corridor than it is. And we also don't want these folks to, to miss construction season and the nice weather and the time to make money. But also, something I've been hearing for three or four years now, since before I was on the council consistently, consistently from folks in the West End, is what is the city of Davenport, what is the city council doing for the West End? What are you doing for Rockingham? We used to have pride in the West End. We used to have pride in, on Rockingham. We used to have businesses lining the corridor. And now, as a gentleman earlier said, you know, we've got depreciating land values, we've got vacant buildings, we've got similar uses. We don't have a variety of amenities for, for folks in the West End. You have to drive to other parts of town to get a good meal. And so this was really, it really came out of that feedback from the people of West Davenport, that they want a corridor that they can be proud of. And what we did is we met with those folks, and it was a full room, just like this, maybe just as many people, if not a little bit more. And we talked about what, what do you want to see? And, and what I heard was, we want to see restaurants, we want to see retail, we want to see businesses with jobs. We want modest finishes, and we can do that through an overlay district. We can make the Rockingham Corridor, over time, it will shape what this corridor looks like. And this is something that we are doing across the city. We're doing this up on Elmore. We have done it in the East Village very successfully, and we are looking to do it on potentially Locust Street or, or Washington Street, and all of these places that were once vibrant and need to be reinvigorated. And so that is, that is the why, and I just wanted to make sure that that, I reiterated that from last week.
Thank you, Alderman Grip. Alderman Dickman?
Thank you for giving me the chance to speak again. I was curious if staff could give us the dates on when the current moratorium would expire.
I'll have to dig through the meeting minutes. Give me a few minutes, and I'll find it.
Okay. That would be good information to know.
And if that's all right, Alderman Dickman will wait. Alderman Ambrose?
Thank you, Your Honor, for another opportunity. I listened to Alderman Grip talk about the West End. It's, I guess, I spent a lot of time down there, and I go, I'm a little confused, but it's because of the action or inaction from the past city councils that, you know, we have these issues in the West End. You know, we ever asked for a business is to follow the ordinances, obey the law, and be a good neighbor. So let's, you know, let's not discriminate against areas south of Locust and, and the West End because of, we have some big ideas that, you know, what we're going to make of the West End. You know, let's fill up the potholes and open up the sidewalks and be supportive of the businesses that are down there. I'm sure that would have a greater effect. And staff took six months, and here we are. You know, that's, that's a little embarrassing right there. So I would forget the moratorium.
Alderman Dunn?
Thank you. You know, this isn't something we just ran, jumped overnight. This has been going on for several years. There's been several stakeholder meetings, talking about the Rockingham Road Corridor. You know, we've talked about way back, oh, in two thousand, four years ago, we talked about improving the road. We all heard how bad the road was and needed to be improved, and we made a big investment in that part of the project and moving this forward. We heard a lot of things from a lot of people that we want to see this corridor succeed. I'm, I'm not saying we don't need this business, we don't need that business, but I, I believe there's people that want to take a look at that and, and put input into what do we want to put on this corridor. I agree. And I agree with Mr. Ambrose. We, you know, holding people up is, you know, it's shameful. But that being said, I would like to see how fast staff can turn this around and have some more meetings so we get this moving forward.
Six months.
Okay. Well, I've got a lot of discussion. Alderman Dickman, do you have a, and I guess process, Tom, what would you, if there's any, do we have an intent, I guess, is the issue? Okay. Alderman Mattson?
So, Your Honor, to answer the question, the moratorium, looks like it will expire May eighth.
Okay, so we have, I'll make a motion to table for a cycle.
Okay, we've had a motion, well, before we do that, motion to second, but also, yeah, you're okay there?
Okay, microphone. I was still wanting to go for the seven days because that speeds it up for the people in the audience.
Yeah, I'm sorry. What I have to do is, after motion to second, by procedure, we've got to vote on that first. I'm sorry, but that's.
Okay.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second to table for one cycle, which would be the two-week period. We have the two weeks, and that's a cycle. It's two weeks. There's a motion and a second now. If, I think we can go ahead with the discussion. Now, we can have discussion.
Well, there's no discussion.
So we have to vote on that first.
Yeah.
Okay. And is that a voice or a?
It's a voice vote.
Voice vote, okay. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say.
Okay, you need a roll call.
Yeah, we're voting on, let me just, Jackie, if you're ready to reread that, what we're actually, the vote here, we're going to table this, this resolution for one cycle, meaning two weeks from today. Basically, we take it for a cycle, two additional weeks, to discuss it, get more information, talk with you in more detail, a little bit more involved. Okay? Now with that, roll call, please.
Russen?
No.
Dickman?
So, let's just be clear. We're, we're voting right now on the two-week tabling.
Correct.
That's why I'm saying no, because I would prefer to make it seven days. So I'm saying no to this.
Yeah, we, we have to, at this point, we have to go through procedurally and vote on that motion. So.
No, I guess.
Mattson?
Yes.
Grip?
No.
McGinnis?
No.
Tompkins?
No.
Dunn?
Yes.
Ambrose?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
Oh, one, two, three, four, five.
Five.
Four yeses, Your Honor, five noes.
Okay, so we are not table it. Now, is there an additional motion related to the seven days?
Question. Okay, second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. The call to question. We have to, is that a roll call as well?
Roll call.
Roll call, please.
Dickman? Mattson? Grip?
Let's, let's get clarification.
Right. Currently, it doesn't seem like everyone's on board with cutting off debate, so you're voting on whether to cut off the debate.
Okay. If we're cutting off the debate.
Correct.
A yes is to stop debate and move to a roll call on the main motion. A no is to continue debate.
Continue. Let's, let's, if you don't, if we can still do that, start from begin to make sure everyone's clarified. Tom, is that okay to do that? Let's start over with the roll call, please.
Dickman?
No.
Mattson?
Yes.
Grip?
No.
McGinnis?
No.
Tompkins?
No.
Dunn?
No.
Pardon me?
No.
No? Ambrose?
Yes.
Condon?
No.
Russen?
No.
Okay, we have seven, oh, two yeses, seven nays.
So now, we are still in discussion. Is there another idea that someone wants to bring forth? Please. Alderman Russen.
Thank you. I would like to go back to the seven days originally mentioned and have that be our timeframe.
So you want to table it to committee of the whole?
Yes. You're originally explained where we could suspend the rules.
Right, for a vote at the committee hall.
Yes.
Okay, we all clear it. All my colleagues clear what we're, what we're voting on. Okay?
Second.
Thank you.
It's been moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Mattson?
Yes.
Grip?
No.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Tompkins?
Yes.
Dunn?
No.
He had a no. Excellent.
Oh, he did? I'm sorry. I didn't hear you. Your microphone's not working. Ambrose?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
Russen?
Yes.
Dickman?
Yes.
Let's see, seven yeses, Your Honor, two nays.
So what we have just, so ladies and gentlemen, it's your government in working action. Give everybody input. Thank you all for being here. We have now decided we need a little more information. We will make a vote on this next week after getting more information with specifically, specific related to a timeline and/or whether information we need to deal with. So we will be back next week with that information. Thank you very much for all of that, with all of that. Now, is there a motion for approval on the items on the consent agenda? It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, I mean, roll call, please.
Grip?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Tompkins?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Ambrose?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
Russen?
Yes.
Dickman?
Yes.
Mattson?
Yes.
Nine yeses, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. And we'll let the ladies and gentlemen who are leaving leave, and we'll finish the last couple items on our, on our agenda. The next is, are there any ordinances, resolutions, and motions this evening? Seeing none. Is there any public with business that would like to speak this evening? Again, name, address, please.
Yes, Your Honor. Jeff Weydrich, 3305 Magnolia Court, Bettendorf, Iowa. I just have a question because as a broker, I represent a property for sale on Rockingham, and I now need to go back to the prospective buyer's potential for that location and explain what this property can or cannot be used for, and when it can or cannot be used for. And I have to make a phone call to the owner of the property, which happens to be a bank, and say, here's our obstacles that we're dealing with. I don't really feel comfortable having to say my obstacle are you guys. I have a real difficult challenge, and maybe your staff can email me something that explains the status of this property. I'll tell you the property. It was last operated as a bar, has one apartment above. It's next to the Kinsey's Appliance Place and next to a fourplex apartment building that recently sold. It's a.
Mr. Weydrich, I would suggest that's a good idea. Maybe speak with Bruce Berger and our economic development.
I'll finish, Your Honor, if you don't mind. But my, my real concern is that I've come down to a meeting, and I've seen you guys discuss this at great length on multiple issues, but as I walk out and lots of other people walk out, their hands are, they're, they're tied. And if it's a matter of 200 signatures versus 90, or how many people pack in here, I don't think that's how it should be done. You guys should do your work and get it done. But my questions are there. I, I'm walking out kind of dazzled, trying to, so what now for the, this property? So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? Seeing no one else. Are there any other reports of city officials? If not, is there a motion to adjourn? It's moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, same sign. Meeting adjourned.